Okay folks. In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, the Title 11 of the Meeting Act, adequate notice of the board meeting that was provided as specified in the Act. The proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice of January 28th, 2020. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Township clerk, posted on the district website, sent to tap into Nutley, advertised in the Nutley Sun on February 6th, 1920. Flag salute please. My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the great government which sustains our nation under God, in judicial, legal, and justice for all. Have a roll call, Mr. Kucera, please.
Mr. Parnasella?
Here.
Mrs. Natchek Martin?
Here.
Mr. DeMayo?
Here.
Mr. Ferraro?
Here.
Mrs. Perk?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mrs. Valera?
Miss Serra?
Here.
Mr. Kazinski?
Here. I need approval of the minutes. So I need second.
Second.
Second, thank you. Correspondence. I have one correspondence tonight and I would ask you for your indulgence for a couple of minutes. This letter was addressed to Abby Shidel. It gives me great pleasure to extend my sincere congratulations on your recent greater recognition award for being the seventh player in Nutley High School history to reach the 1,000-point milestone in basketball. It is my privilege to commend and honor you for this great accomplishment. I am certain I join a long list of people within your school, community, and family who are very proud of your achievement. It takes drive, initiative, and practice to reach such a milestone. It is evident this type of outcome can only be attained with the support of your teammates and coaches. I am an educator as well as the Esses County District 5 Freeholder, which includes the townships of Nutley, therefore I understand firsthand the dynamics of teamwork. Your hard work and leadership on the Nutley High School basketball team is praised worth, as well as your reputation among the faculty, coaches, teammates, and your peers. Consequently, I hope this correspondence will offer you encouragement to continue to work towards your academic and athletic goals and to know that your community stands behind you. Again, as your legislator, I am proud to recognize this milestone and offer my sincere congratulations and best wishes for continued success in all of your endeavors. Sincerely, Carlos M. Paramaros, Freeholder, Esses County. Is Abby here? Oh, thanks, miss. This is only a very brief recognition of what you've done for yourself and for our district, and we all congratulate you and appreciate everything you do for us. Keep up the good work. Want to take a picture?
Sure.
Do the board like to take a picture with Abby? Come on, Abby, okay?
Oh, here's my dad.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to have a presentation on our plans for redoing the Nutley Park Oval. Before we start, and I think Sal Ferraro is going to lead us off, I did want to recognize some board members from...
Passports.
Passports, I'm not going to say the old guard, because that's right, all of them are the old guard. Mentors of mine and other board members that were played an integral role in looking at this same project, I believe, back in 2006. Jerry Del Tufo, Sal Alivo. Anyone else, guys? Okay. Wanted to recognize you and thank you for the work that you've done for the Nutley Board of Education, but certainly, we're going to use some of your plans, we're going to give them to the present contractor so that might help them in their planning of what we're looking to do. Sorry, Sal.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Sal Ferraro and I am the Chair of Finance and Facilities for the Board of Education. Along with Frank DeMayo and Charlie Kazinski, we're also on that committee. In our capacity, we, along with the administration, look at capital projects for the district. As we have made the public aware for the past few years, we set aside capital reserve funds to upgrade the oval field. The oval turf was first installed in 2006, 14 years ago, and has exceeded its life expectancy. Not only is the Board of Education concerned with safety of the field, but also the oval is a multi-use space for physical education, classes, athletics, graduation, parade staging, and other township functions. We have pursued the conceptual plans you will hear about tonight through committees, which included Principal Dennis Williams, Athletic Director Joe Pyro, Building and Grounds Director Mike Corigi, groundsman Tim Costa, and Superintendent Julie Blaismer. Prior to this evening, the other committees of the Board of Education were updated, and tonight we bring this to the community. On tonight's agenda, you will see a resolution to submit our intent to the New Jersey Department of Education. Until we receive final approval from the Department of Education, we can continue to develop our plans. You will also hear about alternative plans that may be possible based on final budget, bid cost, and opportunities for grants, donations, and other funding. The extent of our ability to complete these alternatives will depend on the bid cost and the available funding. In addition to the turf project, the Finance Committee has also been reviewing other capital projects, including the secure entrance of Yanacor School. In the coming weeks, our intent is to share these conceptual designs with stakeholders and the Board of Education. At this point, I'd like to introduce Alexis Goldman and Frank Messinio from Solutions Architecture to go over the conceptual plans for the oval.
Good evening, everybody. As Sal mentioned, this project has been planning for quite a long time. In addition to... Sorry. In addition to some of the things mentioned, just point out some other items that are important to note as to why now it's important to upgrade this field. The grounds are in, you know, past their warranty period, beyond their intended lifespan. There's a lot of walkway areas that are in state of disrepair, some of them, there's some areas have tripping hazards. There's the bleacher area, which is also developing cracks over time. It's been repaired, also, cracks are returning, and it's in state of condition. Press box activities are currently, unfortunately, restricted to lifts and scaffolding, and the bullpen area has to be reconfigured regularly because it also is a location for other activities. In addition, there are some drainage issues, and some of the piping underneath the field does need to be cleared and/or replaced. We've added some in, some pictures that you can see, not that you all haven't been there already, but to see some of the conditions that exist. These are the bleachers, you can see some of the peeling and cracking, and the bullpen area, which is, this is, I think, right after the Christmas tree was removed. And the dugout areas, the asphalt is completely worn away and actually pouring out onto the fields. Some additional pictures, you can see some of the asphalt worn away, some of the turf area pulled away, and also, there's some boxes on the field that were once used for trees that are no longer used. And this is very hard to see, but this is actually all the clay from the baseball field has run into some of the storm-drained inlets. So during this design process, we've been working closely with the administration and the committee, and actually with the township as well, focused on, you know, it's been a collaborative process trying to focus on not only what's great for the school district for this design, but how it can also work together with the township and be a great project for everybody. We've kind of worked together on design approaches that would help with town events as well, and also working together to investigate some of the piping and drainage issues because they do go hand-in-hand between the town's property and the schools. So, in walking around and evaluating the project and what exact items needed to be replaced, there are a lot of needs, there are many, many, many things on the list that need to be done. It was although clear, walking around, what items absolutely needed to be done, and those we've included in a list of what we're calling base bid work. Impossible to read from here, but so, as you can see, you can't see here, but we've... One of the most important things we noticed is that the soccer field is actually, the edge of the soccer field is too close to the current fencing, so what we're proposing is to move the field to 20 feet from the fencing, it's currently 13 feet. That would allow additional space for coaching and for players for soccer, so can't see that here, but that's the additional space right there. So that does come a little bit further into the baseball field. And then, in addition, we're showing, right about here, there's a tree we're planning to take out and redo the path around and over to the concession stand and redo this entire asphalt area. That will make this entire route ADA accessible all the way up to the concession stand. In addition, we're showing a fenced bullpen area that is actually completed in turf. And over here, the dugouts, as you saw in the picture, just showing them as new concrete area. There is some fencing, fencing along the property, around the area, that some of it's in very poor condition, some of it's in fair condition. In the base bid, we would include anything that's in very poor condition, as long as any curving that needs to be repaired. And as far as the turf design, we've actually gone through several iterations of attempting to figure out what the best design is for the field layout. It's tricky, obviously tricky condition with the baseball field and the football field, trying to figure out what's going to be a balance between the two to not confuse any of the players. We've actually gone through more than this many iterations of them, and resulting ended up at something similar to actually what exists for the baseball, but with some improvements to the football area, including a logo at the center, some alternating green turf, and end zones in burgundy. There is some talk about at times, and, you know, these things can change, but maybe painting in some lines for baseball during baseball season to maybe make the foul line a little bit clearer when it runs through the letters, or even possibly could paint in the infield arch. So, as Mr. Ferraro mentioned, there are obviously many things that we would like to do with this site, it all depends on, you know, budgeting and available funds. Oops. Some additional items here, so this is the closer-up picture of the existing concrete bleachers, you can see all the peeling and cracking. So one of the options as an alternate bid would be to repair those concrete bleachers throughout. And then, just an example of some of the fencing that could be replaced if needed, if budget allows, we would do more than what is absolutely necessary. The scoreboard, I don't, it's not even, I don't think it's working well anymore. Not functioning, so there's you. Place that, and then also just a picture of the current lift being used for the press box there, and as well, in a perfect world, we would love to get some, be able to install field lighting for the ability to have night games. So again, some existing conditions of the press box scenario. Still lift currently used, in the past, you can see a little bit of scaffolding built in the back closer to the concession stand. So, as we started looking at the press box and how to tackle this fairly difficult task at this site, we actually started with just simply a permanent structure in the same location it is that would look something like this, you know, prefab structure, and as we talked about it, we realized, you know, it would just be a permanent situation of what basically exists, not a really great solution to the problem, would also block views from the concession stand and create a bit of an awkward movement around that area. So, you know, after that, we started the conversation about how much better it would be to have what's a more typical situation, is the press box, you know, on the 50-yard line at the bleachers area, as they are in a lot of other locations. But obviously, this is a much more difficult situation, so, you know, we went through ideas of how that could, you know, how we could connect to the school, maybe make it an entryway, an opening, an entrance to the field, how we can incorporate ADA seating into it, and incorporate the design even of the middle school, of the beautiful middle school into the press box design. So ultimately, after many discussions and options, we ended up with a kind of entrance, what we're calling like an entrance into the field, sort of like an underleading front that faces the middle school. And you can see some of the design carried from the middle school, the piers, the brick, the stone, and some of, you know, nice arch entrances into the site. In addition, we've incorporated the fence components. As you know, there's a very beautiful ornamental fence at this location and some stone, concrete and stone piers, brick and piers. We'd love to be able to reuse those, that ornamental fence, and we've included it, some parts here, the gates reused, pieces onto the railing going across, in fact, so a little diagram showing how we're going to plan it to reuse. So we have the gates being reused at the entrances, some of the ornamental components into the brick and onto the railing above, and some of the pieces, side pieces on either side of the entrance. This would be a view from the field, so this being the press box proper with large sliding windows, an upper area for filming that would be at the perfect height, it's approximately 18 feet, around 18 to 20 feet is ideal for filming. And we're also including some small platform areas that could be used for additional ADA seating, and then two access points down to the field. And then, in this area, an access to what would now be a storage, right, a storage room underneath, and some additional concrete seating that, some of the ideas we had is that could be used for some of the band components, possibly percussion or other parts could be chosen to go there, put them in the center and give them a good, great focal point. This is a view superimposing the school in the background, so this is your view, what you'd be looking at with the middle school in the background. By, you can see some of the design components of the piers and the brick. We have the band playing. So some side views here. We incorporated some additional windows along the side of the press box, so you can have, you know, plenty of view out to the end zones and make it a really clear, open space, and you can see the ADA kind of platform here, and the arched, archways into the street. Just some drawings of plans and sections, you can see the storage area underneath, the stairs up, you have your second tier, so this is 18 feet here and about 25 feet up the roof. And you have access from, to the press box from the street, so we can just actually go back to this. So you're actually showing, this is a potential option also to have a ticket window at the street with a little area recessed for queuing. So access to the press box, you have a door here, and then we do have a ladder that ships down, ships ladder that accesses to access above, which is shown right here, the hatch of the ladder. Yeah, more elevations and sections, a little hard to see from here. This is a diagram showing, so one of the, when we were looking at the many options of how to place the press box and its best location, you know, one of the biggest concerns was the sightline and how much, you know, view you would lose with the angle of the structure here to the end zone. And, you know, we went back and forth trying to find the best location, and it's a balance of placement on the street with how much, you know, view you would actually lose. So based on this diagram, we're showing about 14 people lost, like, seats lost technically, including both sides to the view. So this little area in green would be technically, you would have the greatest view of the end zone there. Just have a video I would like to show you. So you can see the ADA seating right there, the side windows, entrance gates. That ornamental piece there is part of the fencing. The view from above. And the view from inside. Need music for this. Yeah, right? So, that's it for the design. We have just a potential project schedule, so we've basically completed the schematic design, design development phase. After tonight's meeting, we'll hopefully be able to submit to DOE. They do have a 90-day review period that would put us onto May. We're actually hoping to bid this project at the end of March with an award at the end of April, and hoping to start construction at the beginning of May. We, you know, 90 days is typically what DOE can take, although we do have some good relationships at DOE, and we're hoping we can try to expedite, expedite the review for a few weeks to get that approved at the beginning of May. There are unfortunately only three reviewers at DOE right now, so we're going to hope for the best, do our best to make it work, but that... But it should be okay. So, and then field, press box construction, we're showing construction for both press box, if that was accepted as an alternate, would start at the same time as the field, just that the field would have to finish a little bit later, but in time for the start of the season, just because we need to finish all the construction at the press box, if that was to get awarded in order to finish the field, because there would be a lot of machinery getting, you know, needed to complete the press box, we wouldn't want to damage the field. So this is showing completion of everything by the end of August and start in time for the football season. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I don't know that, we might, we don't have discussion at all tonight, or questions, or... Again, the main reason we're, the reason we're having this meeting tonight, the presentation tonight, because we need to get a resolution that's on our agenda tonight into the state of New Jersey to start the process. So that's the main reason that we're bringing this forward. Some of what we see here is not set as far as colors of what we might be doing, so that's still up for discussion, but certainly, the overall safety of the children in the field is a priority, so to get this resolution moving forward, and then I, we're probably going to go into discussions throughout the town on what our overall proposal is going to be, Mr. Ferraro.
Yeah, well, I believe it is our intention to have another meeting sometime in March with the public to discuss this project as well. Some of the, you know, the way this has been structured is there's a base bid, and the base bid is obviously doing the field turf, doing the drainage, doing, you know, fencing work. So you have the base bid which includes that work, then you have alternates, alternates, press box, scoreboard, the lighting, all of that other stuff. That's all going to be dependent on funding and how much money we have available, you know, what the bids come in at, but the base bid, obviously, if the bids come in and they're more, you know, come in higher than what we expected and what our architects are projecting, and we don't have the ability to award these other alternates, obviously, we won't be able to do that. We have also discussed options of creating some type of fundraising committee where there's a lot of alumni, past alumni, there's, you know, there's citizens in the town that they want to donate or assist with this project in some way, so those are avenues we're pursuing. There's other avenues we're looking at, available grants that are out there, other funding sources that may be out there. So this is what going to be, how far we go with this project, obviously, is going to be dependent on what the costs are and how much funding we have, but the base bid, at the end of the day, if we can't award the other few alternates, we can still fall back on the base bid, which is the turf replacement, which is, you know, upgrading the drainage, the fencing, and things that are going to make the field in condition to start the school year.
Dr. President?
I have nothing, I mean, I think Sal really...
Yes.
I think Sal did a really nice job of covering the process, and Mr. Kazinski also covered what we are submitting tonight, what the board is approving tonight, is our intent to submit plans to the Board of Education, to the Department of Education, so that the board is able to continue the conversations on everything that we sought to know.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I mean, if there's any questions that, you know, that anybody has, and we can answer, please, Sal?
Yes, so, Mr. Ferraro.
On the field, yeah, field test.
Just covered, looks beautiful.
Can you come to the...
Yes.
Brickwork looks beautiful. Is there going to be a footing? There's a lot of water coming in, you know that, okay. Thank you.
We certainly appreciate some of the input we've gotten from our Athletic Director Joe Pyro, who's been here forever and has fathered before him, on the makeup of that field, some of the past board members that have served on this board in the past when we put this original field in, so they will be helpful in whatever we might find under this field, because we don't know what we're going to find under this field, but as we move forward, we're certainly going to have more town discussions about where we're going. Any other questions we can help you with tonight, but there will be ongoing discussions as we mentioned. Sorry? Okay.
Mr. President? Just real quick, I just want to, I pointed out in my introduction the fact that we're also looking at the security entrance at the Yanacor School, so we're, the Finance Committee is working on conceptual plans for that secure entrance, and just want to put that out, that at some point in the next few weeks, we will have a similar presentation to review the security entrance there at Yanacor School.
Yes, that's absolutely... Yes, that's absolutely, I would be remiss if I didn't introduce Jack Barry, simply because Jack Barry has given to me, and I've given it to Sal's committee, a thumb drive of all the paperwork that was involved in the two thousand and six present preparation for the Oval, so we have that, and I'm sure our contractors will appreciate the help from the, from the Oval Board, for lack of a better term.
Mr. President?
I'm sorry?
I just want to bring another point up. You know, one of the things that the finance committee had discussed is we're looking at is creating a fundraising committee, so if anybody's interested, if there's a way to get that information to us, names, email, addresses, telephone numbers, that's something that we'd like to, we're going to look into, and obviously if anybody is interested in serving on that type of a committee, please let us know. Do you want to pass something around, Dr.?
I was going to say I can set up a paper at the back, you can also reach us through the district website, ready, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving forward, superintendent's report.
No, you can. Here's paper and a pen if you want to send that around. Oh, thank you, Ian, you're saving me. You're saving me from a spotlight. So hello, everybody, I'm going to get started, thank you for coming. I hope that a lot of you will continue to come back for the next few meetings. In addition to talking about Yanacor, we will have some other public topics coming in future meetings, and we'd love to have you join us at those meetings, we're usually at the middle school, and we'll hope to see you there. For everybody else who's staying with us, welcome back. I hope that everyone enjoyed the winter break and is coming back refreshed and healthy. Stealing maybe a little thunder from Mr. Perigi, but we did spend a lot of time over the last week cleaning and disinfecting using our fogging machine to try and kill some germs and get everybody starting back with us in a, in a healthy, positive way. Biggest question that I always get at the February meeting is about the academic calendar for the next school year. The two thousand twenty-one academic calendar is on the agenda tonight for approval. That calendar that you'll see does start prior to Labor Day, but otherwise it reflects very few changes from this year's calendar. There is still a full week of February break, there is still staff professional learning strategically placed on the Fridays prior to three holidays to make slightly longer weekends for families, and the Nutley High School graduation day remains the same, June twenty-fourth. We still build in four snow days, and knock on wood, if you actually got outside today unlikely, it was spectacular, we can hope for that to continue, but I'm not sure if we're going to be that lucky into the future. Please note that on that calendar, we'll also be closed again for Election Day in November. It's my hoped-for outcome that by that time polling places will be removed from Nutley High School and Radcliffe School. We've been working on this for years and years, and I think we're pretty close, moving out the high school and to the library and moving Radcliffe School. Unfortunately, we're still looking for an appropriate polling space for Spring Garden School, but luckily Spring Garden, the way the addition was built is separate from the rest of the school, so it's a little bit easier, gives us a little bit more time to review that. In other news, we've been busy working on the budget for two thousand twenty-one. We will have a public, a public budget presentation of the preliminary budget on Wednesday, March eighteenth, at that board meeting. Please note that it is Wednesday, I'm going to keep saying this a million times, we're on a deadline to submit the preliminary budget to the county, and with the Monday conflict and St. Patrick's Day on the Tuesday, the Wednesday was the best alternative. We're going to continue to publicize the date often and early, but please tell your friends and neighbors, Wednesday, March eighteenth. We've also had a lot of exciting things happening this month, between concerts and culinary students developing staff lunches, got our Night of Nations, several strategic planning committees and student forums. I don't want to steal anybody's thunder though by me sharing it, so I'm going to leave you with the hope that I will see you at the High School Musical this weekend, Rock of Ages should be a great time. I'll be pulling out my old Doc Martens and making my hair high, maybe even pink, you never know. So hopefully I will see you all there, and I'm counting on you to review what we've come up with for the high school, and Mr. Perigi, what we've done in buildings and grounds. Thanks, everybody.
Moving forward, one second, do you have anything you want to talk about?
This evening's agenda includes recommendation to the board to approve the financial reports for the month of January. Board members should know that these reports are both timely and compliant with administrative code. The other item in keeping the superintendent's remarks regarding the budget, school aid numbers for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year are expected sometime this week, and we're being cautiously optimistic, waiting every statement, so we will keep them involved and updating as the information before the bill. Thank you.
Mr. Perigi?
Mike, can you use this microphone?
Mike, you could sit here if you want, there's a mic. We worked with the Department of Public Works and Parks and Recreation to remove the dirt and concrete and blacktop from the Spring Garden trailer projects. We ran all the new IT, fire alarms in-house, custodial staff is working on the inside of the TC units, cleaning and prepping. All temporary fencing has been removed from Spring Garden and Washington. Over at Radcliffe, we've worked with Parks and Rec, removing six trees from the front of Radcliffe School. Our staff has installed a new floor in room three thirteen at Yanacor due to a roof leak that has been repaired over the winter break. Our staff has changed filters, belts, greasing motors for HVA systems, custodial staff has been cleaning and disinfecting the schools. We have been working daily with Solutions Architecture on the Park Oval Project, and we are scheduling interviews for the week of February twenty-fourth with the two open positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perigi, and I know you mentioned it, but I just wanted to reiterate the shared service time that we spend between the Parks Department, between the Public Works Department, it was very evident on Bloomfield Avenue this week, and Spring Garden removing that stuff, so it's, it's nice to work and see that, the work and the cooperation we get with the, with the town.
And thank you for the tree limbs at Radcliffe School also. One more thing.
Our student record.
You need a microphone?
You need a microphone?
You can move over here and there.
Hello, my name is Connor Fitzpatrick, and I'm the Nutley High School Student Council Vice President. So today, I'm going to be talking about some stuff that the Student Council in conjunction with the Nutley student body as a whole has been doing over the past few weeks. So one of the key things that we have been doing recently is we've been holding student forums and student meetings regarding student environment, and this has been with Superintendent Dr. Glazer. Now, over this meeting, we've been discussing many critical issues that students have felt about the environment in the schools, and we have been working on ways in which to address these issues, so that's been really critical and really important for many students, and we've been seeing the results we want to get through polls that we've been conducting, and we plan on in the future continuing to work with these meetings. Additionally, two weeks ago, we have conducted an event called Night of Nations, as Dr. Glazer previously mentioned, and essentially if you don't know what Night of Nations is, is an event in which we have many different clubs go and they display a culture or any other nation. Thank you. So for example, at Student Council, they represented Nepal, and they had employees' food, and other clubs represented other countries, so it was a really good event, we had high attendance, and we hope to continue doing it in previous years, in following years. Additionally, we held a student academic tribute competition, now this is held between senior, junior, sophomore, and freshman class. Now this year, the student body had a pretty unexpected victory in regards to the freshman winning, so that was also a surprise. Additionally, we had the debate tournament, and that was also held between all the classes, and that one we had the sophomores win, and additionally, we are holding another Day of Service. Now if you don't already, the Day of Service is an event held by the schools, but in Nutley High School, in which we have various students attend events and do service work on one day of the week. Now this year, we're holding it on March twentieth, so we're hoping to have another high attendance of students, like we did in previous years of doing this event. Additionally, we've been throughout the month of February, holding announcements regarding Black History Month, and this has been really helping to spread awareness about Black History Month, because a lot of students really, through some of our polls, did express they want to see more diversity, so that's been something we've been accomplishing. Additionally, in addition to our standard announcements, recently we've been introducing Words of Wisdom every morning, and essentially these words are still help, still a kindness, motivation amongst our student body, and we've been seeing pretty good responses. And another thing we've been doing, and I've been helping out with this personally, is that we've been going around to senior classes and helping register students to vote. This has been conducted with the history department and the AP government class, and we've seen over a hundred kids register for the senior class, so it's been really successful so far. And for the future, we're planning on hosting events such as NHS Games Day. Now we've, if you don't know what the NHS Games Day is, as I mentioned in previous meetings, NHS Games Day is essentially where we have students compete against each other, and it's a friendly competition which is focused on athleticism and teamwork. We're also potentially exploring the idea of hosting a video game tournament and a poetry contest, as these two topics kind of are things that students are never really getting presented kind of focus on, so by expanding the scope of it as we have, we hope to kind of include more people. And that pretty much wraps up my report, thank you for having me.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Committee reports. Let's, Mrs. Allen, if you don't mind?
Sure. Hello, everybody. Okay. The Policy Committee met February nineteenth, we discussed the following policies for first reading, not going to read all the numbers, I mean, the local wellness policy, eye protection, eye protection practice, bed bugs, management of life, property inventory, and hazardous substance abuse. The local wellness and nutrition standards were also updated, as well as the healthy snack list for schools, it'll be distributed to the principals and nurses soon. We discussed the diabetes management program and policy, local on nasal spray is going to be recognized along with the oral virgin, virgin. Dr. Glazer and Mr. Veenmeister reviewed the legal opinion for the Raptor system, which we'll talk about at a different time. There's still a question or two remaining, but we're preparing to implement the system in the high school, it'll be piloted. And the following policies and regulations are on for second reading tonight, school district security, sexual harassment among students, secret societies, student right of privacy, student grievance, plagiarism, student rights, and independent educational evaluations. We will next meet Monday, March sixteenth, at seven thirty.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carnesella?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Administrative Committee met on February eighteen, two thousand twenty. Dr. Glazer provided information on the proposed two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one district and twelve month employee calendars. On the agenda for approval this evening, Dr. Glazer reviewed the Nutley Park mobile presentation given by Solutions Architect at tonight's meeting. Mr. Kaczynski and Dr. Glazer discussed the IMAC timeline. Mr. Kaczynski and Dr. Glazer shared information related to preparing for the custodial and administration contract negotiations. Dr. Glazer provided an update on the trailers at Washington School and Spring Garden School, including remaining punch list items, and the renegotiated change orders on the agenda for approval this evening. Dr. Glazer shared that districts were finally receiving their allocations for safety and security funding from the state. Dr. Glazer provided an update on staffing, including the business administrator, assistant BA, and other personnel items. The next joint meeting of the Board of Education, Board of Commissioners, the next joint meeting of the Board of Education, Board of Commissioners, and the planning and zoning boards has been scheduled for Wednesday, March eleventh, two thousand twenty. This meeting will be held at the Town Hall, there was no legal update for that committee meeting. The next meeting of administration is going to be scheduled for either March tenth or March twelfth, which will be decided amongst conversation with the rest of the committee. That is completion of my report.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Academic Committee met on February nineteenth. Mr. Vanu reviewed the middle school program of studies that is on the agenda for approval this evening. In addition, Mr. Vanu shared information regarding visits to Marona and summoned to see their library learning comments. Additional visits are planned. Dr. Glazer shared some of the things driving the budget, such as additional staffing for electives, STEAM programming, and possible capital expenditures to support program. Dr. Glazer, Ms. Locrizzolo, Ms. Sarah, Ms. Quirk, shared information regarding Strategic Planning Action Committee meetings for safety, security, and health and wellness. Dr. Glazer reviewed the proposed two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one district academic calendar and the proposed twelve month employee calendar on the agenda tonight for approval. Ms. Locrizzolo, Mr. Vanu reviewed field trips and professional development requests. Dr. Glazer provided an update on staffing, including business administrator, assistant business administrator, custodial, and other personnel and contracted personnel items. Our next meeting will be Monday, March sixteenth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met on February eighteenth, the committee reviewed the plans and the alternatives for the Nutley Park Oval and the various shared services with the township, also discussed for the inlet and the piping as regards to drainage and if any remediation is necessary. The renderings that were shared tonight were also shared in committee, also detailed alternatives that might be possible through open bids, grants, and donations. Our insurance broker came to discuss the district's renewal update, they reviewed our premium loss ratio and options for renewal. Mr. Appleton reviewed the finance resolutions that are on tonight's agenda. Dr. Glazer provided updates on the facility project Mr. Perigi discussed tonight. Dr. Glazer reviewed the proposed district calendars for the two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one calendar year, years, and Dr. Glazer provided an update on staffing, including the business administrator, assistant BA, and other personnel items. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March tenth.
Thank you, Mr. Farrar. Mr. De Mayo?
Okay, we had an Athletic Committee meeting on Thursday, February twenty, discussing different levels of sports, being played whether there would be enough numbers in athletics to have a third level, and Mr. Pyro also gave us a brief on the current numbers and the possibility of having students complete a survey in regards to athletics, what they may or may not want to see, and how the current setup is, is going. Our next meeting date is yet to be determined.
That's fine, thank you very much. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulations, number six oh one, allow twenty minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to only state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign in with Mrs. Pecusa before you take the microphone. Anyone wishing to speak at this time? Thank you. We will move into resolutions. Dancheck, take Academic, please.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move Academic Resolutions one through six as written.
Second. Discussion. Local.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Farraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Sarah?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Carnesella, we take Administration, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to move Administration Resolutions one, two, three, three, as written.
Second.
Discussion. Local.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Farraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Sarah?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Farrar, you take Finance, please. Mr. Farar, you take finance, please.
Yes, Mr. President, I move Finance Resolution 1 through 11 as written.
Second. Discussion.
Yes, I have a question. On page 20, under William Scottman, for $259,000, is that for the secured entrance?
No, no. That is the, uh, finished Washington School, will be owed for Washington, for Washington. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, my, as a follow-up to that question, uh, for Washington School, what, what are we still waiting on, that's not completed by the contractor?
Well, as of last Tuesday, but Mr. Perigi might have it finished, um, who was on our end, we needed, uh, fire alarm systems to be approved, but is that done?
Uh, tomorrow.
There you go.
So which is good? Uh, fire inspection Monday, and hopefully, next Saturday, we'll have...
I'm, I'm sorry, I did not hear that part of the discussion, and I'd like to...
Fire alarm systems being worked on again tomorrow, but it's pre-wired for Washington Trailer, they have to come back and hook up to the school itself, and then we have a fire inspection scheduled for next week, and hopefully, we can get everybody moved in for next time, clean and prepared.
Where do, where do we stand? Just a follow-up on that, where do we stand with furniture?
Furniture, furniture, yes.
All right. Thank you. So we are, we finished the discussion on that, need a roll call, right?
Yes.
Finance, all the finances.
I'm sorry?
Finance, second.
Yes. We need a roll call.
Roll call, good afternoon. We're roll call, no finance.
We have, we have, we have second.
There you go.
Frank second.
Who first did, for Madeline?
Sal.
Madeline, yeah, Sal and first, first and second.
Yeah, I have that, oh, okay, right. Mr. Carnesal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaier?
Yes.
Mr. Farar?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mrs., uh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Quirk, will you take personnel, please?
Yes, I move Personnel Resolution Number 1 as written.
Second.
Discussion. Local.
Mr. Carnesal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaier?
Yes.
Mr. Farar?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mrs. Sarah, will you take Policy, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I move Policy Resolutions 1 through 2, second.
Discussion. Thank you.
We need a roll call.
So we need a roll call, you're right there.
Mr. Carnesal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaier?
Yes.
Mr. Farar?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mrs. Sarah, will you take Policy, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I move Policy Resolutions 1 through 2, second.
Discussion. Thank you.
We need a roll call.
So we need a roll call, you're right there.
Mr. Carnesal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaier?
Yes.
Mr. Farar?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mrs. Sarah, will you take Policy, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I move Policy Resolutions 1 through 2, second.
Discussion. Thank you.
We need a roll call.
So we need a roll call, you're right there.
Mr. Carnesal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaier?
Yes.
Mr. Farar?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mrs. Sarah, will you take Policy, please?
Yes, thank you.
We now come to the section where we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications.